We're going to have a special meeting to order. The Kinnick County Groundwater Conservation District's workshop. We'll do the establishment of form first. We have Director Palmer, President, Director Shaw, Director Bland, myself, Director Robinson, and Director Mendley. Director Ward is absent.
And Director Gaines.
And Director Gaines. Excuse me. Thank you. Everyone, please rise and join me in pledging allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Do we have any public comment?
I just have a comment. Since this is a workshop on audits, the audit did come back with several concerning critical issues that need to be discussed. And I'm hoping that we'll get some answers to some of these in this workshop tonight. There was a financial management, several things under financial management barriers, where it was contracting and legally noncompliant. Water management deficiencies, governance and oversight weaknesses. And then they did some recommendations to implement and maybe some promises on how you were going to update some of your practices on your financial contracts and things. So I'd just like to know that y'all are going to be working on correcting these deficiencies.
If you would, please state your name for the record.
I'm sorry.
Please state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sharon.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comment. Anyone else? Okay, close public comment and open discussion.
How did you want to go? How did you want to do?
Floor is open. I didn't ask, I didn't put this on the agenda to start with. I just suggested that it needed to be in a workshop.
You want to just go through the auditor's report? Page by page?
I didn't see any point in it being on the agenda to start with. I've read the audit report from 2006, 2008, 2012, and 2024. Reported on two of them. We're in better financial shape than we've ever been in, and this is the best report we've ever had on an audit. So without specifics, somebody has a specific problem with something that they need addressed and they want addressed. And now's the time to bring it up.
I'd like to ask a question is to. It's like the test wells. Okay, I'm not sure how all this process works. Was that not part of the audit? Were the test wells were monitored and updated? Would that not be in the audit as far as being?
Director, if you have the audit and you have a question about it, show it to me and we'll talk about it.
Several things these, I've got the test well records here and they have been running. And if I read it correctly, the test wells are only supposed to run for 365 days. Some of these have been running since 2019, 2020, 2021. And I have no record of them being changed over to a regular well. If that's part of the management of what we're doing here, that should have been in the audit is what. So I'm not, I'm not completely updated on what, how things are this audit supposed to work because I'm new on that.
I'm a little bit confused because this is not a workshop to talk about the audit that we had done by the state auditor's office. So if there's a specific in that that wasn't covered, every director talked to the state auditor's office. We were all interviewed by them. They asked us what our concerns were. Is this something that you failed to mention to them or you did or you didn't?
To talk to the state auditor. I don't know where that come from. I didn't talk to any state auditor.
Well, they, sure, I thought they reached out to everyone.
They didn't reach out to me. I don't do the computer stuff that y'all do. I don't even know how to cut it off. I have to get my wife to open it and let me read it. Okay. But as far as these test wells and stuff are concerned, that's part of the management of the whole water board. And that should have been stated in the audit. That's part of the operation, I would say. The water is the main concern. It's not how much money we save or we spend correctly if the water's not managed correctly. And maybe an audit is just supposed to be on the, on the money wise.
Director Mendley, do you have the state audit right there in your packet?
Well, I didn't get a packet. I guess there's one piece of paper.
Okay.
I didn't bring the state audit with me that we've got previously.
I thought there might be a copy on our desk, but I guess there's not.
We didn't make copies for everybody because I had already, already been handed out.
Yeah, well, I didn't bring one. I'm sorry.
Well, I'll read it to you. Wes, you got a copy of it?
No.
All right. Well, it says right here on page five of the state audit. District insufficiently moderate water uses and did not enforce its rules. District did not effectively manage its well permits or enforce the time submission of required water pumping reports. Lack of oversight and enforcement places the health and long-term availability of the area's water resources at risk. Specifically, the district did not enforce its rules regarding the submission of water usage reports. One regular permit holder failed to submit their card reports to district for two years. Six of the seven wells, which I thought there might be four test wells approved for operation under test permits have been in operation since 2019. Director Mendley is mentioning that. Far beyond the 306 per day maximum allowed for a test permit. See the text box. Addition of seven test wells been operated since 2023. One of those test wells, I think Director Shaw, you might own or be, you know?
I did it right here. One, that's 23.
Okay, so that's yours. So five of the seven test well permits, permit holders did not submit all required monthly pumping reports. And the district did not actively enforce any corrective measures in response. So I don't know. I just got this handout from Janelle. I don't know if it has a fix for this particular segment, but that's a half a page right there. Test permits for new wells. And then it goes on in the dialogue box here, reference the text box. District rules state that creation of a new well requires a test permit, which is valid for 365 days during this year. Test permit holders must report each month the actual amount pumped. When this period has elapsed, they must apply for a regular permit. Test permit holders do not pay water usage fees or permit renewal fees. So that would probably lead to the fact that, you know, that should have been done. Sources and it cites a source. So I guess my question to the board is, does anybody here want to address what's been done regarding this finding on page five as I just read?
Yes, and I discussed it with the auditors. Our rules say a minimum of 365 days.
If I could address it, Ms. Hobbs?
That's not what it says here. That's not their interpretation of it. I guess we'll get Mr. Ellis to interpret it.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, of course.
Well, then give me the floor.
But you had said there was nothing in here about test permits, I thought, but.
No, I did not say that.
Okay, well, we'll check the pages, but anyway.
Okay. Look, the rules state that a test permit will be granted for a minimum of 365 days. This is something that I pointed out whenever I did an amendment in 2019. This board has been aware of this problem in the rules for quite some time and it has not been addressed. It's open-ended because it says a minimum and it does not say that there needs to be closure. Mr. Ellis and I have been discussing that and we think we have a way to close that up in the rules quite, quite easily. Where at the end of that 365 days, within 20 days, I believe is what we said. I have to look on my phone what we were talking about. Greg?
Yeah, you know, I agree.
It's quite elegant and that, and that's the way to close it. But right now it's open-ended and that's been the problem. That the rules have had an issue and the board has not corrected it.
Then that's, then that's what the audit's about.
But that's not what the audit said.
You know, we don't.
No, I'm telling you that the board has known about it for quite some time. The audit is just repeating the fact that this has already been told that that's in there and the board has not addressed it.
Well, they don't have to pay anything for using it for five years?
That's not my understanding. My understanding is they report monthly and they pay water use fees.
My understanding was they only had 365 days to pump on that and then it went over to, changed over to a regular meter.
That is not, that is not what the rules state.
Well, that's the way I read it. I don't know if that's the way it's supposed to be, but that's what it come out to me.
When you say a minimum and you don't put, you don't put any closing loop on the end of it, it's open. There's nothing that requires the test permit, the test permit tee to come in and, and ask for the hearing. We didn't put that, that was never put into rules when they were redone. I believe it was in 2012 when those rules were done. And it's never been edited again. And we need to put that, we need to close that loop and require after the end of that 365 days, within 20 days or within 30 days, the applicant must file for a permit hearing.
Then why did it state in there that it would have to be rolled over into a regular permit? If it didn't have a date on it when it could do it, leave it as a test well. What's the difference? I know there are rules, but you have to, you have to buy it by something. You can't just leave it open.
That's the problem is the rule is open.
Yes, I think the rules need to be clarified. And then like Wes said, I think it's an easy case. We have several changes we need to make in the next couple of months based on the legislation that passed. And I'm going to include that, recommend a change in that some year.
Yeah, all we need to do is put at the end of that, at the end of the 365 day period, Warren, when you take the minimum out, just call it a 365 day period. Within 20 or 30 days, they must file for the, for the regular permit hearing and complete the, that's what completes the process when they file for that. We don't have that requirement written into the rules. It was oversight whenever they were redone. And it's never been addressed. And that's why you've got them sitting out there like that. Ms. Hobbs, do they or do they not pay water use fees on a test well permit?
No.
They don't. Okay. I thought they did.
This is, that's my issue. If it's been a problem since 2012, why hasn't nothing been addressed? You know, we're trying to work out all these problems and save water and they're pumping acre feet of water every year out of these wells and not paying for it or not even being accounted for.
With all due respect, Director, I couldn't care less why it hasn't been done. I only want to get it done.
Well, then maybe.
If we need to get it done, then let's do it.
This whole meeting if you don't care less about it?
No, I don't care why it didn't get done. I care that it gets done. Okay, I'm not here to point fingers at our boards. Why it didn't get done? Let's just get it done if we need to get it done.
I think the point too, Wes, would be that. Matt, you can weigh in on this. You know, how long have you known that this is a problem? Director Shaw, how long have you known this is a problem?
Different board. Let's just stop right here.
Well, no, not, I'm talking, I'm talking.
All right, go ahead and talk.
Janelle, how long have you known that this is a problem? And who's accountable? Wes, you know, somebody needs accountability for these errors. The board is accountable to the, I'm talking.
It's not about fixing the problem. It's about finding somebody that's accountable to point the finger at. That's what I'm hearing.
No, it's, that's not what you're hearing. What I'm saying is, in addition to fixing it, there needs to be accountability for the errors that were created in the past. That's like, you know, you can't say all we need to worry about is fixing it. That is not accurate. We need to look back at why it wasn't fixed and we need to make those that are accountable for not fixing it when they knew it should have been fixed accountable. What that form is, that's going to be a difference of opinion between everybody you ask, but you can't ignore that. That's my opinion.
That's a waste of time in my opinion.
No, it's not. It's absolutely not.
No, you let me finish. It's a waste of time in my opinion. Fix the problem, you move forward and then you count accountability if it's not done. But you have to fix the problem first. There's no accountability when you've got an open rule.
There is accountability. That rule, it's open and the opinion of the state, and they, in my opinion, do a pretty thorough investigation of what this is. They have lawyers. They read what the rules say. Their opinion on what the rules say is this, and they say, these were the violations. If our council disagrees with that, that's fine. And if our council says we need to make improvements so that in the future this finding doesn't happen again, that's fine. But this is the finding and unless the state comes back and say, oh, no, that's, you know, we were wrong. I think we need to assume that they were right and there needs to be accountability for what they were right about.
Ma'am.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I think the confusion came about, the rules state very clearly on permit, test permit. If the board approves the application, the application will pump the well for a minimum of one year or within one year perform a pump test acceptable to the district.
Okay, and it says right here, district did not conduct.
Don't interrupt your letter.
I thought you were done. I'm sorry.
No, no, let me finish. In the application for a test permit, at some point through the years, it got, it got changed. It didn't follow what this says. It says, it does say a minimum. I talked to the auditors about it and showed them exactly what was in writing here and they chose to, they said, well, what was on the, the.
Let me correct you. What was on the form said a maximum of 365 and the rules said a minimum.
Yes. And when I explained, called it to the attention of the lady and showed her both of them, she said, well, if it says that on the permit, then that's what you have to put the application for the permit. That's what you have to go with. Yet on other things, we had to go exactly by chapter, by our rules. But it's right here in writing. It has been for years and years and years.
But on the permit, it doesn't say the same thing.
On the permit, it says a maximum.
It's not the permit. It's the application.
All right. Well, just wanted to straighten that out for you, sir.
Thank you.
But if nobody ever brings it to anybody's attention, then this stuff just continues from year to year to year to year. Each problem needs to be addressed and it should be addressed every year, not just wait until somebody brings it up.
Well, and this is August.
Been five years and water's been pumped out and you said they pay nothing for that water because it's a test well? There's acre feet of this been going out every year. If you.
Director.
Never mind.
Dave likes to call me out and he just called me out on my will. Have you checked to see my reports religiously? Every month there's a pumping report. Stop. Don't argue with me yet. I've got the floor as you like to say. It's coming out of the same well that I have a permit on. Okay. And I paid for that water. I've already paid for it. It's, it's right there. I've reported it every time. It hasn't even been, huh, this last year. But every month I bring in a report. Okay. I just, I wanted to clear that up. This is not water that's coming out of a new well, that's coming out of another well. We've just got a pipe off of it, you know? And there's a meter on it, Dave. Okay?
That's fine, that's fine, but.
We do have a, we have had a, we have had a applicant turn in a request for, are we not?
Sir?
We had an app, one of the test well permits has turned in an application for hearing yet?
No, not yet.
Not yet?
But they're, they're fixing it. It's in the process.
I know that.
Well, it's on a will right there, you know?
But I mean, everybody else, and I know, I worked at the ranch before they, all this started. I quit in 2019. I know three of these test wells. Yeah. And as far as that, they were running pretty goddamn regular before they did the test well. They were existing wells and they're artesian. I understand that. I know about those three wells. But when they've been pumping for five years and they're still on the test well permit and you said they do not pay for that? That's. We're talking about acre feet of water that's gone. We're talking about six of them.
That's a, that's a valid question though. How many acre feet are you talking about and what kind of money are you talking about?
Well, I don't know. You tell me the money. There's acre feet.
Let's see.
Also, where do we locate it at?
Let's just look, let's just.
Three of them is on the Pinto.
Okay, so we got one here that's showing six acre foot of use in 2024. A little under six acre foot of use. If that was ag, that'd be $6. If that was commercial, that would be $59.83.
I'd ought to count the zeros there.
Uh, no, I'm quite familiar with the fees. Looking at acre foot for 2023 on the same well, it was 1.58938 acre feet apparently. Unless these are meter number readings, I'm assuming these are, no, these are marked in acre feet. The total amount of acre feet for 2020 was 401, just shy of 402 acre foot. 402 acre foot at agricultural rates would be $402. And at commercial rates, that would be $4,019 worth of revenue that year. Just to put it into dollars and cents, every other year, you're looking at about, let's see, 21 acre foot for 2024, 40 acre foot for 2023, two acre foot, and this is all of them total.
Okay, you're talking about.
Two acre foot is what they pump.
Acre feet. That's lots of gallons of water. That is not even the principle there. It's not for money.
Well, that seemed to be the complaint. So I was just addressing the monetary aspect of it. And the amount of water is nothing.
But it's all you're worried about is the money. You're not worried about the water.
No, when it gets to 2020, you actually, you actually, you know, you actually got 400 acre foot of use there. You could actually, you know, you could, you could farm on about 400 acres with that. Well, actually, uh, about 200 acres, about two acre foot, yeah, about 200 acres.
Make light of it if you want to.
I'm not making light of it. I'm trying to be comparative of what it is.
You're, you're making light of it because you don't want to.
You, you were saying that there are vast amounts of water underneath this test well permits.
400 acre feet is a vast amount of water.
In 2020, that's what was pumped. Since then, it's been four or five acre foot a year. And that's a big deal.
Okay.
Were those wells drilled when you were there?
Yes, sir. They were already there.
Okay, that's what I meant. Were they, I meant, were they drilled while you were there?
They were already.
They were already there.
They were already there. It's on the Pinto, three grand.
Right, I know where that is.
Yes, sir. And I know what went through there before I quit. And I'm not blaming nobody, but it's still an issue that hadn't been worked out. And you're making light of it.
No, I want to know what you're, you're coming with a problem. Give me the solution. What do you want to do to fix it, Director? What do we do?
What do we need a forum for if I, if I'm the ones going to have to fix the solution?
We all have to work on it together. That's why we need a forum.
Trying to work with us. You're, you're.
Oh, I'm not working with you.
We know you're the smartest guy here.
What do you suggest, Director?
I suggest we do something about it and get it corrected.
Okay, we've got.
You're the smart one. You're make the motion to fix it. All I'm worried about is the water. You're worried about the dog.
Uh, no, I'm worried about following the rules and right now there's nothing that we can do that I know of to force anyone to come in here and ask.
About forcing anybody. We want to fix the problem where it doesn't continue.
Okay, and I would like to have a suggestion for me for how we're going to do that.
So can I intervene a little bit there? Maybe, whatever.
Please.
Continue the same subject in a different way. Janelle, you just handed us this product right here that has some stuff that's actually in the audit and the response to, in the back to the office, Amadou, however you say it.
What?
Engaidi. Back in May, there's this back sheet that you just handed us of this package. And so that, that is also in the audit and that was a response to what they found. And that's, that tells how some of the things are being fixed. And then there's this two pager right here that you handed us. Was this in the July package? I don't know, just to clarify or, you know, when it just, this is dated July 11th to the board, but you know.
I'm sorry, I started on it. I started on it July 11th.
Okay, but it's effective today, right? This is the first time anybody's seen it.
Right. It's the first time anybody's seen it.
Okay, so, so that's fine.
These, these first two pages are what I worked up. The third page I worked up too, but that's what I wanted to say to the office.
Yeah, and that's actually in here mostly, you know, that, that's, that's back from, but, but this new stuff.
Yes.
And I think Director Robinson, part of the solution will be included next month, right? Because an ethics policy or whatever, we don't have and we need to get one, right? Isn't that on the agenda next special meeting?
I believe.
Next week.
For the regular meeting.
I believe Mr. Ellis might be able to be more lightning regarding that.
So anyway, so, so, and let me, let me get to that too. So the first point is, you know, since the board is accountable to the public, could this be put on the website? Because I don't think there's any confidential information in here or whatever, but this is from what I can gather by just looking at it now, this is, Janelle, what you have recommended, you know, or expresses compliance with what was found in the audit.
Yes, compliance to a certain extent.
I'm just saying like a start and what we're doing and all that. So, so this would be something in my opinion that the public would like to see, like, and this is kind of the point that I made. And, you know, this meeting, I don't know if, I'll take credit for having this meeting and Wes, you said early, you didn't, it wasn't your idea or whatever, but, but I think, you know, the public's here and they're interested and I think the public might, you know, see this video on YouTube or whatever. But, you know, nobody can read this from those venues and I think this might be something that could be put on the website. Can this be put on the website?
It can.
You can look into that.
But I can tell you what will happen. Individuals that get on their little keyboard, their social media, they'll cherish this. But that's beside the point. It's happened before and it'll happen.
I don't, I don't think it's a decision that the board could make underneath a workshop, but I certainly say you can advise, you can make a recommendation.
No, I would just ask Janelle if she put it on the website. So, so, so that's what that is. And then something, I guess, Greg, you could weigh in on this and Janelle too. And this, Wes, is concerning what you're talking about going forward. So going forward into the future, we want to avoid getting a priority rating on the next audit. I think the fact that we've had three in this district already, which singles us out as pretty much the only GCD in the state that has three individual audits.
Actually four.
Okay, so four, then we're definitely the only one with four. If you say there's four, I'm only aware of three, but we need systems in place. And then the air force are called continuity binders. In my opinion, you know, the rules and bylaws are relatively clear and that's what all this stuff was found out from. This is where, Greg, I would ask you, you know, does or does not the rules and bylaws and the management plan and the DFC and all the other stuff, does that not essentially create a continuity binder? What the general manager is responsible for, what the board is responsible for? I mean, it's, it's, does the board need, like, or does our general manager with our guidance need to create some kind of continuity binder separate from all that stuff? That says in June, I'm going to, you know, give everybody this and in August, I'm going to give everybody this. So like, you know, well, and you know, we're talking about evaluations and all this stuff, you know? And you could do it electronically too. You could have your, you know, reminder set to do it every month. In January, do this. It's just like a planting guide in January, plant your, you know, hey, in February, plant your corn and March, do this. So, so is that something we need or is the rules and bylaws like, you know, enough to give us and the general manager, you know, enough guidance? It seems to me rules and bylaws are enough, but you know, maybe it's not.
If I'm not mistaken, there's a policy manual.
Well, I think there's a procedure book. That sounds more like a procedure book. So these are, these are the various deadlines that come up every single year and the what they kind of have been and what we have to do. So these are, these are the various deadlines that come up every single year, and the, what they kind of have been and what we have to do. You know, that's, that's.
Do other boards have something like that? Or like, you know, I'm trying to get tools that prevent this from happening. I would think that, you know.
Every PTA in the state has one like that. As far as groundwater conservation districts, I believe some do and some don't, but I'm not really sure.
I mean, when you were in the EA, how did you know that you're supposed to, you know, evaluate your employees every year? How do you know you're supposed to?
Something like that. We have, we have calendar events we have to do, have to follow.
Okay, and what happens if you didn't do it, you know? That's another, whatever, I won't put you on the spot there, but.
Depends on what it was we didn't.
I know, it's, it is, so, so that might be something we could investigate maybe, and that might help us uh, not be in the seat that we're in and not have to be explained to the public, just file mistakes.
Well, I think you should. Greg. Okay, on the first page, uh, that man said the district did not fail the audit. A term that has been thrown around loosely by some individuals, that we failed the audit. We did not fail the audit. The district was not declared or determined to be non-operational, and we did not receive a negative rating. So there's.
Okay, I can say that about 06 and 08.
If you look at the back page, there's several things that are, were fine within the audit. Yes, there's a number of things that need correcting, and they will be, and that's pointed out in here.
Yeah, good. And, you know, I'll, obviously, this would fill in and give some of the answers to everybody, to the public, to me, to Perry, to Randy, to everybody. You know, but this is the first time you've seen it, so, so we'll review that. That's, that's good. We did get a priority rating, though. And a priority rating is not a positive thing. Right? That is the lowest rating. They, they don't decide if we're effective anymore or not, I don't believe. They used to, but they.
I'm sorry, I want, I'll need to explain something real quick.
Okay, and help us out, yeah, feel free.
Supposedly, once every 12 years, every district in the state gets audited with a performance audit. And a performance audit looks at your management plan, your objectives within the management plan, and measures how well you have achieved those objectives. At least two of the audits done here have been those types of performance audits. This was a 36, I think, 061 audit, which is different. This is more of a, of a financial procedural audit. It doesn't look at the management plan. They didn't talk about your management plan or your objectives or anything along those lines. Whether or not you're an effective district or whether or not you're an operational district. This looks purely at whether or not you were following the necessary procedures, where they have all the policies and all the other stuff. So the priority rating applies to those few items that they found, where they said that needed to be fixed and fixed as soon as possible. Uh, it's not an overall rate of, of the district, you know, for, for the, I can't remember how many, how many policies all of this. I think it's eight, can't remember for sure. One was missing. Okay, and that's a necessary policy. We have to have that. We should have that. So that's actually a priority item is get that policy, get that policy done.
Is that the ethics you're talking about or?
That's one of them, or that was maybe the only one.
That was the one policy that was missing.
Right, the one.
So this audit could not have found that we were non-operational, because it's not a performance audit.
It's not, of course, I didn't, they didn't look at your management plan, they didn't, or your objectives or anything along those lines. It's a different kind of audit.
Okay, so the, the follow-on question on that is when, you said 12 years was the cycle?
Supposed to be.
And when was the last time we had a performance audit? 2010?
We had an audit in 2010.
That was the last one we had prior to this, right? That was a performance audit. Okay, so if this is 2025, you know, they didn't do it at the 12-year point, we're three years overdue.
We, we had an audit. Okay, Ken Carver was hired as general manager in 2012, I think. And so between the 2010 audit, they found that the district was not a non-performing district. And I went to TCQ. TCQ, the staff at TCQ and I worked out a compliance agreement, basically a plan that we were gonna follow to bring everything into compliance with Ken, and Ken had a whole binder, stuff that he, he was doing, that he had, that had a report to TCQ every quarter, which he did. For, I mean, they were up to two years or three years. At the end of that period, where they said we had met our requirements.
Part of that was a follow-up from the 2006 audit, wasn't it not? Was it not?
No, well, no, I mean, there, those are, those are two separate things. The 2006 audit was done, uh, was more like the one we just had, because we didn't really have, I mean, that was right after the 2005. You have to have the management plan, you have to have the objectives, you have to do all the stuff. Uh, you have to start the DFC process. And so, uh, that audit was more like the one we did here. It was kind of, the, the governor requested that one. It wasn't part of the regular schedule. But yeah, we had, had one in 2006, I think, and then again, again, again in 2010.
Which was the one Ken who?
By 2013 or 2014, we had met all of our, our requirements with TCQ that we had in our compliance agreement.
Okay, so it was about 2010?
I think that's right.
And then the process started to fix it?
Right, I think that's right.
You said Ken and somebody?
Ken Carver.
Okay. So then the, I mean, then basically we're back in cycle. We're not too far away from potentially being.
We should have been audited by 2020. We weren't. And that's, that's, that's the same audit schedule that they got a law.
Uh, 2022, you're saying?
That's right, 22, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, and whatever, they're undermanned and, you know, underpaid too, so whatever, but so the takeaway, the takeaway from that would be all of us, you know, whatever, Team Kenny County Groundwater Conservation District probably ought to get into that game pretty quick and start being prepared for that.
Yep.
Because, I mean, I'm not gonna, you know.
It's always a good idea.
I don't want to hang out my dirty laundry right now, but, I mean, we need to probably, uh, get to work.
You should, you should continually look at your management plan and your performance standards and make sure that you set your performance standard. It, it does, it drives me a little bit crazy as counsel for these districts that some of my clients are failing a task that they wrote. Management plan is what you say you're going to do. You put, you put together the four performance standards and exactly what it takes beneath those performance standards. And then they don't meet it. And that's, you know, I've, I've, there's been another attorney who's been trying to get that whole state auditor thing repealed. He thinks it's, uh, it's counterproductive to have it. My comment is, as soon as everybody gets a straight A's, then yeah, we don't need it anymore, but until he gets straight A's.
I ain't gonna have it either. Director Manley.
Are we still in compliance, though? TCQ. You said we were in compliance with TCQ back then. Are we still in compliance with them?
I have, I haven't done a compliance audit. I haven't looked at your picture. Management plan, your performance standards, to see how well you met them, so I have no idea if you're compliant or not. It's a good idea for, for you all to review that and make sure that you are before the state auditor gets to do that for you.
Well, and part of that, whatever, is a drought plan. I mean, if you have a management plan that says you're gonna do this, your drought plan ought to implement that management plan.
The management, everything in the management plan, every performance standard should be that, in order to get an A.
And have rule, and have rules in place in an attempt to do so.
Before the audit, the, the process is that you, the DFC is established, you know, DFC sends out the mag. Within two years, you have to update your management plan. Within a year of that, you have to update your rules. And the management plan is supposed to implement that, that mag to achieve the desired future condition. And the rules that have to implement that management plan, and the management plan sets out exactly what the performance standards are going to be. And then you have to make sure you, you know, the performance standards. If you're, one of the easiest ones is almost all the districts out there say at least, you know, once a year, we're gonna have an article on water conservation published at the local newspaper. And they either do that or they don't. And, um, if we think.
When they don't, you fail, and you ain't gonna, you ain't no way to get it.
There you go, so.
Okay. Thank you. So what process do we have in place to ensure that an annual financial audit is done in 2025?
That will be on the agenda for the September board meeting. They have an engagement letter from the auditors. Same firm that we used last year. That will be up for board approval.
Okay, so that's, so that's an example of.
Is that satisfactory?
I don't know. If it happens, it is. If it's left off the agenda and we forget, and then we get in trouble, it's not. So we need a process in place. We need to have like a calendar or something that says, you know, do this, or do this, or do this, or whatever. And the general manager is accountable for making sure that those things that the board votes on and that is put into play, that is established in the bylaws, is established in the management plan. The general manager's job description is to, uh, ensure that that happens. The board obviously is involved in that, but those things need to happen that the board just, uh, has put in the general manager's purview. And if they don't, then, you know, then we're in these meetings and we gotta figure out how not to let things slip through the cracks.
I would say come up with an, a suggestion on how to do it and offer it.
Well, yeah.
Well, what we can help get it done is to help get it done.
Next month at the regular board meeting, I might have something that might fix that.
That would be great.
Is this time where we can set it up where these people go ahead and get their regular permits on these wells? Is this the time to do it? Or do we need to wait until the next meeting?
Director, I don't know what vehicle you think that we have to force under the conditions that we have right at the moment. I think that would be a question to ask Mr. Ellis, how that, how we can proceed that way? Because I don't know how to tell you. I don't, I don't what to tell you.
It's pretty simple, just have them get their regular permits.
Yeah, it's, how do we, how do we, how do we make that happen is the question that you're asking. And I can't answer that other than to contact those folks and encourage them to go ahead and go through the, the permit hearing process.
Encourage them. So we have no leverage over any of these people?
I don't know, but we have our, we have our counsel, we have our counsel here. You should direct that question in, Kim.
You're running the meeting, so I direct it to you.
I have already told you what I know, and what I know is it's a minimum for 365 days, and we don't have any loophole to close it. If we do, Mr. Ellis, please tell me where it is.
After, in, in 3.04, after the pump test is completed, it says the applicant must submit an application for a regular permit. It doesn't set a deadline for that. I think they need to fix that.
But it's after the pumping has completed. That is a minimum of 365 days. That means that's the end of it. I mean, y'all can read it any way you want to. I read it one way, y'all read it another.
I think that certainly was the intent. And I have to tell you, I'm, I'm surprised anybody is okay just operating off of a test instead of getting a regular permit.
Me too.
That's, that's a pretty dangerous, dangerous place to be, in my opinion.
You can lose it. The board can just take it away from you at any moment.
Right.
But if we fix that, more importantly, if we fix that within the rules, okay, and put that notice in there of those dates, can we not turn around and notify all of our test permit teams that they need to go ahead and do this? We've had a rule change. They need to do this within 20 days.
If you pick 20 days or 30 days or 60 days or whatever.
Right, whatever it is.
I send a letter, say you've got this period of time, there's an application for a regular permit, or cease operations.
I don't know, I don't know how else to address it, but with the rule change.
That works real good.
Well, I hadn't been here five years, but you have to address it, and the board was unwilling to address it. It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter that it didn't get it done. We're here now, and we can fix it, so let's fix it.
So.
This is what I was talking about before, about lawyers writing this stuff up where nobody can understand it. It's a, you're talking circus. And I'm not trying to be rude to you.
Can I sneak in here?
I understand lawyers are paying the answer. One of the reasons is because they try and cover everything.
After the 365 days, that should have been to the end of it.
I agree.
So, so Perry, let me.
I agree that was the intent, too.
So Greg, you've read it. You've seen what the state said about it. You know, we, uh, want to, uh, use you as our counsel to assist us in the effort to remedy the situation and fix it. So couldn't, uh, we ask you to draft a new rule? The language should be changed to read this, and that, in my opinion, I'm saying to you, my Greg Ellis opinion would remedy or at least make this better, right? And then it would be left to us. If that was our opinion, you know, obviously, you would make a recommendation. And then we, uh, put it to public comment too, right, Wes? I mean, we know the process.
That's right.
Right? It's a new rule, right? You may find wrong. And then we vote on it. You know, but I, but I would predict, you know, that if Mr. Ellis, you know, crafts it, and he, you know, knows how to craft a rule. He's been doing it for a long time.
Liz already said it. We've already pretty much.
Okay, so and if you've done that, then we need to, uh, get the verbiage at the next meeting. It's not too late to put it on the agenda, you know, do we move to put this to public comment and we continue the process?
We, we can do them one at a time, if, if that's the way you would like to do it, that, that's fine with me.
As fast as possible, yeah, I think we should, this particular rule.
If that's what you would like to do on that one, that was fine. My thought was that we were gonna propose it, we were gonna put that forth at the next rules committee meeting. If you want that on the next agenda, that's fine by me.
Yeah, I think.
I have no problem closing that loop immediately.
Yeah, let's close it.
We're not at public comment, but please, ma'am, what, what would you like to say? It's all right, you know.
So if these were issued back in like 2019, will an amended rule apply to those test permits that were already issued?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Cool, so then, you know, that would be a way to remedy it. And remedy it is a big part of the.
We want to get them closed out. All right, everybody wants to get them closed out. All right.
Well, I wasn't trying to be hard on the people that's doing the pumping. The, the, the problem is, is it has failed our body here has failed them.
Point well made and taken.
Okay.
And so we need to fix that. And I think we came across a way to do that.
That's good. That's all I was wanting.
So we got something else besides the test well permits in there we want to get in this meeting.
Not, it's not that I know of yet.
Okay. Well, we have another workshop. It's, it's not a big deal. We can set a time for a workshop, another workshop on the, on the audit now. Um, whatever the board would like to do. Uh, I think the one thing that we got, came out is we want to get this proposed rule out. Greg? Let's get, I don't want anybody to be upset in the process, so we, we need to do this. We're gonna have to look at it at the meeting and say grace on it, and then put it up for the public to review it, and then have, have the, uh, for, what, 20 days, I think?
20 days.
And then, uh, we have to have the public hearing for any comment.
Right.
And then we can immediately vote there. Well.
You can.
You can, but that's not usually typically what you want to do. You want to, usually they, you can, we're gonna consider the public comment on it.
Depends on how extensive the public comment is and how many changes they make.
Yeah, there you go. So if it's not very extensive, everybody's on board with it, we could probably just go ahead and do it then.
Yeah, if you don't get a lot of public comment, everybody's okay with the changes, you, you adopt the changes immediately. If there's extensive public comment, you need to take some more time, and said, probably send a back the rules committee, work on some more.
Okay.
Well, I don't see any problem with anybody, because it's not, they don't have to pay anything extra to do this.
Well, we don't know what we get in public comment one way or the other, Director. It's so, I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to preconceive that it will take any longer or, or it will be short.
Change over from the test well to the, to the permit well? What if it's an existing well and they turned it into a test well? It was already in. Well, I'd have a permit before that.
Well, wait, wait just a second. I did, you're going down another trail. Let's talk about the ones that we gotta get cleaned up right, right now.
Well, I'm talking about the same wells.
Well, okay, all I'm saying is we've got to have the loop closed in the rules, so we can get them to hearing. Okay, and I just want to play the rest of this out, so everybody knows what the process is. At that point, they come to hearing, uh, and there, there'll be determination on whether there's gonna be a contested case hearing, or there won't be a contested case hearing. And then it goes through the hearing process before it ever becomes a regular permit. I just want you, I just want everyone to understand that there's other, once we get them to the hearing part of it, there's, there's several other. other, once we get them to the hearing part of it, there's, there's several other hoops that occur before it ever actually winds up becoming or not becoming a regular permit. Depending on whether the board chooses to grant it or not. So just so you know, once you close up the rules and, and you tell them they got to come to hearing and they request hearing, then you've got to go that the process continues on for a little while.
Yeah, I understand that.
All right. Just want to make sure everybody.
The process is never.
It, it just, you know, once we get them hearing, it just automatically become a regular permit. I just want everybody to understand that. And there's no guarantee the board will or will not grant it. Uh, depending on what is presented at the hearing.
Will or will not grant what? The rule?
The permit. The permit, period. Yeah.
I don't see where, I'm not understanding everything, but I don't see where it'd be a problem if they already had the existing wealth from them as not permitting them the permit.
Well, the, the, the test permit is for, the test, the test permit is typically for additional water. Or it's for a different, or it's for a different use. So that's why the board gets to choose whether or not they grant it or they don't grant it. And it just depends on what evidence. I mean, hypothetically speaking, um, someone came in and asked for a test well permit and all the surrounding neighbors wanted to be monitored. What should occur is the district should go and put transducers in their wells. The person that, that asked for the test well permit is allowed to do what they want to do. Say they wanted to farm a hundred acres there that they cleared. And they wanted two hundred acre foot of water. They would be able to pump that two hundred acre foot of water for that crop for that year. All right. And at the, during that time period, we're looking at all the transducer data around there. All that comes into that hearing. And then the board determines, okay, you know, that two hundred acre foot of use was or was not impactful to these folks around here. We should or we should not grant it. Maybe we should only grant a portion of it, not the whole amount. Uh, so anything can happen once you get to the hearing. It's not set in stone. Whether you're going to give it, you're not going to give it.
Okay.
Uh, you're going to give a portion of it or whatever. Depends on what, what, what evidence is presented to the board during the hearing.
I need to do a little more research myself. I don't have the information on how these wells affected their surrounding wells.
Well, that's, you know.
See, and that's been five years and we don't know what it's done to the people around us. And then the water and Pinto Creek dried up and all these wells are right there close to the Pinto where I work. I mean, I'm not.
Well, I don't know, I don't know anything about the, the, the wells or the depth of the wells. So I'm not going to comment on any of it. Uh, they, they may be influential and they may not, but.
Got the depths here.
The, the thing is that I see within the rules, that's a potential issue. If someone comes in and wants to do a test well permit and no one files for interested party status or allows someone onto their property, the district onto their property to monitor, then we don't have any data. Anyway, so there, there can be blind spots. The thought process, I think, when they created these rules was to get data to the board for the board to make a more informed decision on whether or not to grant a permit, a portion of that permit. Uh, and, and gather information on how it might impact wells around them. But just like we can't force someone to come in and ask for a permit because they might not want to use the water. We can't force someone to allow us onto their property to monitor while somebody's doing, in their one year test period.
If they won't let us go in there and monitor them, then they don't need a test well. We don't need to let them.
Well, that's, that's, we don't get that option and we can't deny it because the, the, the area neighbors won't let it be monitored. Uh, so the way they addressed that within the rules was if someone did not allow monitoring, they could not gain, um, protestant status at the end of the three hundred sixty-five days and carried into a contested case hearing. Um, that's the way they addressed it in the rules, whether that's right, wrong, or indifferent. To me, it's get, it's about getting the data. And the good news is in between twenty twelve, when these rules were written and the test well permits, uh, the test, testing thing was done. Back then, the monitoring system for the entire county was far, far smaller than what we currently have. So we have some monitoring whether we can get on adjoining properties or not. If we can get on adjoining properties closer to where the withdrawal is occurring and in the same formation. That's the, that, that, that's the big thing. If we can get down into the same formation, then we really know.
Same formation as these, these three wells here because they're deep.
Well, the question is, is there any monitoring anywhere close in the area that may be around the same formation? Um, above or below, you know?
These are.
And we may have some monitoring over there. I, I don't know.
I mean, that's something I need. That I want to know.
I don't blame you.
Okay. I think we're going in the right direction. At least we got something to say.
Greg. Greg.
Yes.
You've looked over the, the whole audit, haven't you?
Yes.
Uh, what are your concerns with it?
What you're talking about has been my top concern, what they brought up. I think that one of the nine things that you can be petitioned to T C Q over is not actively enforcing your rules. And, uh, the audit, although the maximum minimum protocol, I think, is questionable, but still that it, it has been, it came out, as it was published. It basically say you're not properly enforcing a rule. Now, I don't know how many, it said six out of seven since twenty nineteen. I don't have any idea how many testing well permits you've issued in the last ten years or whatever, and, or how many of those, you know, might continue.
They're right here.
Oh, your, your question, there's any, any more that may be open?
Right.
Right. Okay. Just wanted to make sure. I knew where you were at there.
Already for the last ten years, we did seventy-five wells. And we found six for radical plants. I'm not sure that says you're not enforcing your rule. I just don't, you know, six out of seven sounds really terrible. And so the ones since twenty nineteen obviously have, have, there has been a problem. And again, I, I think you're right. I think that was a rules issue more than anything else. There's confusion between the rules and the, and the application for.
Well, one of the things, you know, one of the things that was a problem within the rules, uh, whenever I came through and, and did my amendment, uh, we had no, we had no zones at that time. So if someone wanted to file interested party status in the southeastern corner of the county from where my farm was at, underneath the rules, the district was required to put a transducer in that well at the applicant's expense with no realism that there would be any usable data at all uh, in that process. And, and that's because the rules were never finished in twenty twelve, whenever they, they revised them. It was a lot of, a lot of things that were left open ended uh, and not considered at the time, and they never got readdressed. Uh, thirteen years later, there still haven't been. Uh, that's one of them. And that was an issue in one of the, and because of that, you know, I don't think the district was real apt to jump out there and follow exactly what the rules required. Because the way I read them, as soon as someone comes in and applies, if you are within the same management zone, if a hundred people come in here that are ten miles away from you with a hundred wells, the district is bound to put a transducer in every single one of them at the applicant's expense. So what's going to happen is they're never going to, they're never going to do a test well for three hundred sixty-five days and do it the gentle way and see if it's actually impacting somebody's well. What they're going to do is they're going to do their own, uh, test pump. Because it's economically more feasible than something like that. It was a hole in the rules is what I'm pointing out and it, it doesn't accomplish what the end was. The end of the testing permit was to see how does it affect the guy next to you? You know, is it going to, is it going to dry up his house well? That's, that was the point of the testing permit. It was to find out whether you were going to adversely affect the guy right next door to you and hurt him and, and whether or not that use was detrimental to them.
Do we have damn formation on these test wells or surrounding people? That's what they were put in for to test. Do we have that information?
That's the way that, you got to go to the way the rules are written directly and the way the rules are written is in order for that to occur when the, the test, the applicant comes in for the test permit. Okay, they publish notice in the newspaper. Greg, please jump in if I'm missing you. They publish notice in the newspaper and that gives the public an opportunity to know that there's going to be a hearing on this test permit. They come before the board and the board grants or does not grant this test permit. At that point is where any member of the public that has a, has an interest can say, hey, you know, I've got property next to this guy or I've got property in this management zone. And I think his use may wind up affecting my well. So I want to be an interested party. And the way the rules read right now, the district must monitor that well for that three hundred sixty-five day period. But if no one asks, no sir, there's no data. Because it's not.
What's the purpose of a test well if you don't collect the data from around it? Why is there a test? Does it make any sense? I mean.
The, the purpose was to allow people to find out if the use was going to negatively impact them. This gives them the opportunity to find that out, but you can't force them to find it out or allow the district onto their property to monitor the well. So you have to give them an opportunity. You can't make it happen as a district. You don't have that type of authority. The district doesn't have that type of authority.
To use of the test well. I'm trying to just understand what's going on. I mean, if you don't.
I don't know how to explain it other than the fact that it, the purpose of the test well permit is in order to have a three hundred sixty-five day period that the neighbors can find out if that use is going to negatively impact their use. That's the purpose of the, of the testing permit. But if they don't come in and ask to be monitored, there's nothing you can do about it as the district. You, you don't have any right of eminent domain to go into somebody's property, say, I'm going to monitor your well. You just can't do that.
So Perry, I think to, uh, you know, priority number one, whatever is fix the ones we have.
Right.
You know, so we're going to fix the ones we have and Mr. Ellis is going to help us and we're going to perform the process and take it where it takes us. You know, not to open this can of worms right now and not to change the agenda, but, um, you know, if we were to get applications for new test permits, um, those have to consider a lot of things. And one of those things they need to consider is the amount that we already have permitted. And what, you know, given all the facts, what we should permit. And, you know, maybe the chance to get in a new test permit, depending on the circumstances, and I was trying to be vague, you know, but some people might argue that we don't have a whole lot of extra permitted water available to even give test permits.
Well, but that's.
You know what I'm saying?
Point. Why put in a test?
So, well, I mean, you got to have rules about what would happen if we did do one. But whether the board even approves one or not is going to depend on a lot of things.
When, when these rules were adopted, the primary consideration concerned was interference between wells. Didn't want, want one operation, one well to have also a problem for somebody else as well. Trying to prevent the harms otherwise allowed by the rule of capture.
People having to drop their pump because somebody is pulling the local table down too much.
Or, or.
I mean, that's the, those concerns. Now, and I have to tell you folks, there have been a number of proposed rules that were published and public comment. And, and were never adopted by the board. We, we've done that multiple times. And if you can't get four votes to do it, you just can't get four votes to do it. So, um, some of the things I think are missing out of the rules are to, are to try and maybe missing out of the management plan is what happens when your production begins to exceed the bank? What are you going to do? And I think it's a good idea to put people on notice what you intend to do at that point. What are you going to do with the existing use? What are you going to do with any new wells to come on or try to come on board? And, and I can't tell you, you have an answer for those questions. The law, I don't think gives you a strong answer. The, the courts and the legislature have so tied our hands, we're walking a tightrope between the property rights of the people who have been pumping, the property rights of people who want to pump. Prior, prior to the day cakes where they said it's a vested property right that, that every landowner is entitled to, to capture some amount of water from their land without telling us how much. Since that moment, I have not said to my clients, once you hit this level, you can stop issuing permits. I don't think that's the case anymore. I think you have to continue to issue permits. Well, if you're continuing to issue permits beyond the level the aquifer will sustain, what do you do with the existing permits? And then how do you make those succeed? But that's, I, I wish I could give you an answer until we have some additional lawsuits or maybe better legislation. I, I don't know what the answer to that is, but I think it's a good idea to say, here's our plan. Now, what I've done in other places is you have historic uses because they have most investment back to expectations. They have the best case to make if there's taking lawsuits. Need to be protected against further encroachment. So once you get to a certain level, if you say all these, these now all historic use permit, everybody after this is just a regular permit. Regular permits are going to be subject to cutbacks more than the historic use. Then you can't cut back historic use. But you can protect them as the statute says, the maximum except practicable. So protecting historic uses, everybody from that point on, when they're issued a permit, they're given notice. We may have to patch you back if there are more applications, if there's more exempt use. Because exempt use, you have no control over. Those wells go in and they start pumping and you have to account for it somehow.
In the chapter thirty, thirty-six point one sixteen says if we can regulate them.
You can register them. You can't regulate.
Yeah.
You can't regulate it. You cannot, cannot require, cannot require a drilling permit. You cannot require an operating permit and you can't. Against those wells, against that pumping.
But it says according to the amount or source of the water availability, if I think is the way it stated it. And if it gets to where to the point like you're talking about the aquifer drops down, then it's unavailable to pump as much as what everybody's pumping.
I'm not sure what section you're talking about.
Thirty-six point one sixteen. Okay, I don't know if it was on the sea or what.
Okay, that, that's the general authority to regulate. All right. Or it says you may regulate the spacing and production of water wells to, as far as practicable, to, to minimize, draw down, uh, water table or reduction of artesian pressure to control subsides, prevent interference between wells, prevent degradation of water quality, prevent waste. Uh, and you can regulate the spacing. You can regulate the production. Um, you can limit the amount of water that may be produced from a defined number of bakers assigned to that authorized well or limit the max amount of water may be reduced on a basis of bakery per baker. You could, you have all these options available to you. The thirty-six one nineteen provides the, I'm sorry, it's one seventeen, provide the exception, exemptions for that. A district by rule may provide an exemption from the district's requirement. So you can do your own exemptions. Excepted provided by this act, a district shall provide an exemption from the district requirement to obtain a permit for drilling or operating a well used solely for domestic use or for providing water for livestock or poultry. That is A, located on more than ten acres of land and B, capable of producing more than twenty-five thousand gallons a day, which in my opinion means more than seventeen point three four gallons per minute. Then you not, can also require a permit for drilling your water well you solely supply water for a rig that's actively engaged in drilling and exploration for oil and gas. Drilling a water well authorized and permitted issued by the river commission for mining activities. Or drilling a water well for temporary use to supply water for a rig that's actively engaged in drilling a groundwater production well permitted by the district. So those things you cannot require drilling permit for, but you could require an operating permit. All right. So, but you cannot require drilling or operating from, uh.
Under twenty-five thousand. Under twenty-five thousand.
Under twenty-five thousand.
For domestic use.
At twenty-four hours a day, that's twenty-eight acre feet.
Right. Ultimately, if the county were to be developed and cut up, domestic use in those, I mean, also probably have a pretty dire impact on overall pumping.
In Hayes County where that ten acre provision doesn't apply, entire subdivisions have been, been built up individual wells. Because they, they knew they could not get a permit of the size they wanted to put in a utility to supply that neighborhood. Now, that doesn't mean there's any more water in the aquifer. Those people are currently crying to their county commissioners because their wells are going dry.
Yep. And I bet they're pumping twenty-four seven to keep the tarable too.
So I, I think the, you know, the management plan, and this is not a. By September. The manager plan. And probably when you review it following the next adoption of DFC. Needs, in my opinion, needs to have a provision that says, this is the plan for the future. This is what, what, as we approach production. Approaching the mag or exceeding the mag, then this is what we're going to do. Now remember. The mag A is a modeling number, which means it's wrong. Okay. Estimation, a bunch of wild ass guesses where the pump is, where it's current, how afraid we're gonna get. So that's, that's kind of a. A tool to use to see how close we're getting to a danger spot. It's not. It's not a permit limit, it's not a production limit. If it's, if it's anything at all, it might be considered a production limit. But the goal was to achieve the desired future condition. So you're trying to achieve the desired future condition and you'll notice. You know, the target is a condition for at least part of this district is, uh, lost water springs, right? It went dry and your production didn't even come close to the bank. So you're producing well below the mag. And, and we still had the springs go wrong. I don't know how to keep the springs from drying up. I don't know what we have to do. We need to get enough. Hydrogeologic science to tell us. What if anything we can do, make sure those springs continue to flow. And we either can or we can't. And if we can, we need to do, if that's gonna be the DFC, then we need to do what we can to maintain. If we can't, it's not a good DFC.
You've changed the mag. We don't change the mag.
Well, that's new at the bank. The bank comes from Florida building board. They run the model and they tell us, they, they say, you tell us what you want your aquifer to look like. And we'll tell you how much you can pump every year and still achieve that, that condition.
Well, the most recent, the most recent event is the one that, that gets me is. It rained right over here fifteen seventy two and ninety. Almost twelve inches. And that thing came roaring back. It's almost twice what his average is right now. More so than what it did last year. The rain fell in the wrong place. We all, everybody's thought it had to come from the northeast corner of the county. To hit that spring. Well, it came from, it came from east in the Anacostia Mountains. And it filled it. And, and, and it hit it, and it hit it harder than what it did last year.
Yeah. But that didn't do anybody any good. Gets it all run off.
Well, the thing about it.
Tank water.
Well, it ran off the surface, but it did do the spring a hell of a lot of good because it's flowing at like forty two CFS right. With that, almost double what its average is. Its average on a yearly basis is twenty four CFS, twenty three point nine to be exact.
Well, we, we, that, that's the kind of science we need to get. We need to figure out. Limitations that will help it. We need to know what they are and pray those have to.
The exciting part of that to me was not regarding whether pumping was affecting the spring or not. The exciting part about that rainfall event to me was, it seems to be indicative that. The recharge area for that spring is far more. Vast than what we ever suspected it was and extends farther towards the south than what we ever expected it to, but. That's a question for our new hydrologist. I want, I want him, I want him to. To explain that one to me because I was utterly shocked by it.
Water's gonna find a way to get to the lowest point. It rains over there, it's gonna show up here. Cause I watched the tanks, our, our. Where I work, it'll rain. It all runs off into the tank. And for like a week later, it's still filling up the tank. And then whenever it gets done draining to the tank. Then it goes, the tank goes to receding down. But it'll drain into that tank for a week through the ground. I mean, so that means it just spread out. We're getting that much water. But the charts all show that that's all just the temporary. It has been declining since two thousand nineteen and it'll have a spike when we get a rain and it'll go back down and it'll drop more and it'll go back up the next rain. That's what I presented in here before. It shows on the charts. That, that's what's happening. It's still going up every time it rains and then it'll fall. Even if we get rain out southwest.
That's what it's been doing since it's been recorded as far as I can tell.
And, and I'm not the hydrogeologist, so I don't, you know.
Well, I mean, I'm just going by what the charts. Mr. Brink brought in here.
I, I'm just suggesting that using the best science we have available. We have to determine what we can do to, to achieve that desired future condition. And we need to put in our plan what we're going to do to achieve that desired future condition.
I think there's one other.
One, we got it, we got, we got to tell them what we're gonna do and we're gonna tell, kind of tell them how we're gonna do it.
Uh, I think there's one thing that everybody's overlooking here. So the process, when, when we're talking about this specific. Area that we're talking about right now, right? So, one of the reasons why this came up was probably because it was overlooked. So what's the process? Uh. Once you, uh, somebody submits, how do you keep track of? That. Well. For that permit. Yeah, so if we're not monitoring this. If somebody puts in a permit and you're not monitoring it. And then you come in here and you don't look at the book and you say, oh, uh, this right here, this right here. If I don't know that. It never comes to anybody's attention. No, but that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying how is it monitored in a house? Is there, does there need to be a program that, that shows you that this on such and such a date, we need to do this? So it's kind of like what David's saying, on such and such a date, this came up. That you need to go back and address this issue. That's what I'm saying because this right here could have been, uh, totally fixed. Just by knowing. That when you're supposed to come back and look at it. But, but did, but it was that, that the reason that it happened was because, uh. We weren't able to monitor it. The way that, uh, we may need to, or.
Turning in their pumping record.
No, I'm talking about once, once this starts. The process. So you've got three hundred sixty five days. Is there something that tells you, A, uh. It's.
Yeah.
It's ninety days away from the, when this thing's due, uh, we need to look at.
The, the monthly report.
What I'm saying is how do you keep up with, uh, uh. How do y'all keep up with it? Once, once they turn in the permit, how do you keep up with it?
Well, they report it monthly is my understanding. Their use monthly.
They should admit a monthly report.
No, but I mean, how do you know, I think Matt, correct me if I'm wrong and. And this, this would be, you know, assuming that we're gonna fix this rule that says after this, we're gonna do this.
Be able to track it.
But you have to be able to. Comply with your own rule. And how do we know that if I get a test permit on here and we change the rule and says you have. Between this and this many days, how do you know? As the general manager, and we don't yet, but we need to put this kind of thing in place. Because when it. If you. Let it expire when it's supposed to happen. Because your process isn't in place. Then you're accountable for that. So if three hundred sixty five days was the rule and it goes three hundred and sixty six days. Then the state comes along and says, why didn't you do it like you're supposed to? So you need a process, right? You need an alarm to go off. You need a, a calendar or whatever.
All it needs to be is some kind of software or something. I got, I got a little question. That's from Greg. Hypothetically speaking, if. We were to use twenty days, I think we were talking thirty. I'll just say thirty. If, if we put thirty days at the end, at the end of three hundred sixty five days, within thirty days, the permanent applicant must request. Regular permit. Right? And, uh. I don't think we need to do anything at that point because if they don't request it in thirty days, they can start all over again. Cause they just lost their right to get that, that test permit. They didn't follow the rule. So there's no, there's no follow up on it. They, other than they're gonna have to start all over.
And how we write it, but what if they keep pumping and then, you know, we failed to. Shut them off or we failed to do what our new rule says.
Well, there's.
Then it's on us.
As far as I know, there's no arbitrary, there's no. Well, there's no, well, we would certainly notify them. That the thirty days have passed and, and they no longer were operating under a test permit.
Permit expires.
Yeah.
And your authority to pump stops.
Yes.
Unless you have a regular permit.
Absolutely. Yep.
What, what I'm asking for is this, it's, it's not rocket science to you. Everybody's got a program, at least the companies have programs. When something has already elapsed. They're gonna send you a letter telling you, hey, this is what's fixing to happen because.
It's one of the things that Janelle likes to talk about this afternoon. I, I believe you all need, it's not a required. But I think it's something you should have. You need a compliance enforcement policy. And compliance enforcement policy sets out how you, what you're going to do. When you find somebody who's operating the well out of compliance. Whatever, whatever that is, whether they have paid their fees. Pass their test well deadline, pass, have a regular permit, they're exceeding a permit. Using it for, uh, something that's not authorized to use it for. Any of those options. Then you have a, a procedure that you, that you follow. Typically. They get two letters from, um, the staff saying, we believe you're out of compliance. Either. Give us information showing we're wrong and do that. Or if you're in compliance or. Bring it back into compliance. And then the second letter, if necessary, says, okay. We're gonna have to turn this over to our legal counsel if you don't bring it into compliance immediately. And they turn it over to me. I sent them, I sent them two layers. I sent them a, a initial notice with a case file suit. I sent them a second and a final notice with a case file suit. And then I filed suit.
Well.
I spent the last two days dealing with a woman in Houston that got. Two letters from the staff, two letters from me. A third letter from me got, uh. Was told to file an application, filed the application, didn't follow through on the application. And they'll pay the fees on it. Got sued, got served. Had a default judgment taken against them. And now they're trying to sell the property. And they're mad because there's a four hundred fifty thousand dollar lien against their property. Now, it's that high because the subsidence. Minimum per day amount, fifty five thousand dollars per day. And they stayed in violation for so long that had a hundred dollars a day, which is almost the minimum. The judge came up with four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, we're gonna settle that. Probably for twenty five thousand dollars. But, you know. As you say, you, you never emailed me.
That's, that's, that property up real well though. She's not selling it.
I sent her, I sent her a list of twelve, twelve different places where she was directly contacted. By me or the staff or, or a process server. And saying, you know. And they did nothing. Now. Now they're unhappy. Sorry.
We need that, we need that rule. I mean, we don't have to get to that extreme, but I mean, you know.
Well, that's not, but, but, but if, but that process, that process is, is very, very conservative. I mean, you, you. Notified by staff twice, you're notified by council twice before you ever get to the point that you're gonna wind up in court. You've got a lot of opportunity to take care of your business and get straight.
We legally cannot shut any well down, can we?
Yes. Yes, we can.
There's a lot of process to go through, but yes.
When I file a lawsuit, the lawsuit is for damages. Uh, under the, of the civil penalty provisions, which is now zero to twenty five thousand dollars per day. And I request an injunction against further violation. Now, if this is a municipal supply well. Or, you know, it's an irrigation well that has crops in the field, we're not gonna go shut it down. Alright, but. Uh, there might be some wells out there that we do shut down.
Okay, well.
But, uh, but no, that's, that's not something I, I recommend because you don't.
We're not intending to do anything like that. We just wanna get. Control and have people do their correct deal, but.
I've, I've got a modal home part that. Is in. Way in violation of their permit. And they're still in violation and permit came up for renewal. So we didn't renew the permit. Now he's. Complaining to the AD and a bunch of other people saying. There's, 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 these, these seventy homes, these seventy modal homes are gonna be without water because of these people. We haven't told him he can't pump. Told him he's in violation. So.
Fix it.
Oh, cool.
Fix it, right?
We need, we need that rule. We need to have something where we can enforce what we need to enforce. But not to the extreme.
I think you call that a procedure more than a rule.
You have a compliance enforcement policy.
Yeah, it's a policy.
Gives us direction on what you want us to do and how you want us to do it, then we need to follow the policy.
Yep.
Do we have the policy?
No.
No, that's what they, that's what he's talking about. We're gonna Janelle with.
Okay.
And I think, I think it's great. Absolutely.
Can I ask a couple more questions? Related but different subject.
We don't have any most adjourned. Keep going.
In. The audit, the state audit. Uh, in the same section, and I read it before, but I just wanna clarify. For everybody's, uh, knowledge, and I didn't see it here, Janelle, so maybe it was, and maybe it's been addressed. One regular permit holder failed to submit reports to the district for two years. Has that, uh, been fixed? Has that? Individual. Slash company, whoever that permit holder is. That failed to submit two years of reports for our rules. Have they fixed that? Have they? Submitted those and is that a closed item or is that still open?
I need to go back and, and check and see if I'm not mistaken, that's the one that. The gentleman bought the property, it had. Two permitted wells on it. Um, that reflected in the deed. But actually. The wells are fenced off. There's a fence there. And he has not had access to those wells. So it's something that he's. He and the previous. And the previous owner. Are trying to negotiate or work through.
But this, wasn't it a piece of property that was subdivided? You sell? Okay. I just wanna be clear on that. That's what it sounded like.
Okay.
And the wells ended up on the wrong side of the fence.
Ah, that's happened before.
I think it's moved some chunks for some reason.
Okay, well. I don't know, uh. I guess Greg and Janelle and whatever can, uh, you're aware of this particular.
Yes.
Event.
Yes.
Okay. Good enough. And then the last, well, last one, I don't know, another one, and I think this has been addressed. The budget is on, uh. Next week's agenda, the annual budget. Right on next meeting.
I'm not looking at that agenda right tomorrow.
Okay, but it is, right? I mean, that was the finding in here that we need.
I believe that's one we're having that meeting.
Yeah, that was one of those things on there. Okay. And is that budget, uh, can we get that before? The day of that meeting or?
Yes. I have to tell you before the day of the meeting.
Okay, cool.
It's the budget and the proposed tax rate.
That's, yeah, right. Okay.
Do we have anything else? Mr. Ellis, do we have anything else?
Well.
I think we might need to cover at this point.
The other one I was concerned about was the, the, the bank signature. I'm not sure how that happened, but. There were two carryover directors who were still on the signature instead of new ones. So, um.
I was curious if that had anything to happen when, when, uh, I know that we had one that had to get off because he was working at the tax office. Uh, director de George, I believe, uh, had had to step off. Uh, whenever they had the legislative change and, and because he was working at the tax office, he could no longer be a director. And, uh. I was wondering if one of those might have been at that time, but I haven't looked at the actual ones, who, who wound up left on there or not. But more importantly, right now, the only ones on the signatures are the seven that are right here.
Right.
Declined.
Right, that is correct.
It sounds strange.
That's, that's you being accurate, that, that's fine. But. That's, we don't have anybody on there. That's all I'm saying is right now, we don't have anybody on there. It's not supposed to be on there.
Okay.
And just for clarification for everybody about. Every month. We okay the check. Or where the money's gonna go. So it ain't like, oh, we didn't know where this went. Yeah, we do know where. I just, I think there was a issue with, uh. About some checks left or something. What was the deal with the ones that were unsigned or one wasn't.
Five, three and a half.
Five checks were, they were issued with only one signature.
Yeah, one signature. Slip, slip bys. It happened that it was a director's signature. But it, it wasn't anything. Stranded, they just happened to slip by, but we're paying attention.
They didn't, they didn't find that any of the payments were improper.
Yeah.
Or the, you know, there was, there's nothing to bury us so long here, but. We do require two signatures on checks. We should mail a check unless it has two signatures.
And they also made us start signing copies.
Yeah, I always, always sign copies.
That was something they didn't write it.
They were, they were pretty adamant about that one.
And I had a, I thought of a way to fix that. Which would probably be, once you get two signatures on a check. You make a copy of those checks. And the bill before it ever leaves and we get a, a copy of that in our packet. So we actually know. The checks were signed and where they went before it ever leaves here. If y'all wanna do that, I mean, that's a checks and balances deal.
That's just insurance.
And how we.
I, I, I don't think you're gonna have, you're gonna wind up with a lot of entertainment getting paid on time.
No, I mean, once you, once you sign the check, if I came in here and I signed the check, you came and signed the check, it automatically goes to that printer and it gets scanned, boom, it's done. It gets sent out. It's no, it's no different than, you're not doing anything any different. It's just the checks and balances.
Oh, you're talking about, you're, you're just talking about sending and out to the directors.
Yeah, that, that, and that will never, that would never, that would never happen again.
Yeah, y'all, y'all can receive all that. I don't want that email. I get enough every day.
But I mean, uh, it's a, it's a checks and balances process. If you all want to do it, the board wants to do it, that's the way you eliminate.
Satellites signed in over three and a half, four year period that have many checks, you know, a few checks slipped through, one, one signature, yeah, that's not, apparently not good. It is, but we can ensure that that doesn't happen. That might be a good idea.
How many years was that?
Make copies anyway.
Four or five years.
Four to five years and five checks?
Three and a half.
Really?
Three and a half years.
Three and a half years and five checks? I don't know if you worry about that.
But, um, it's just.
As long as they got, as long as the people that were supposed to get paid were getting paid, which they were, and the amounts were correct, and they were, that's okay. That's not a big deal.
I think it amounted to what, what, six thousand dollars, four thousand dollars or something.
Okay, five checks over six thousand fifty-seven dollars without the required two signatures.
And then he had one former board member co-sign checks, co-sign checks were fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. And I'm not sure what the vendor, who the vendor was. The, the district paid four and eighty-six thousand dollars to vendor without required board approval. Now, that's not talking about the check approval, that's talking about the contract approval, right?
Yes.
And then, quite honestly, that probably a mistake in the minutes more than it was, or didn't approve the contract, but I don't know.
Right. Right.
We found out early on, state auditor, is that there, there are bean counters. If you, you have, if you have a posted agenda to hold a meeting and nobody shows up for whatever reason or not, or you don't get a forum, you don't get minutes for that meeting. And if you don't have minutes for a posted meeting, they say missing minutes. You say, well, there wasn't a meeting. There's nothing in here that says it wasn't a meeting. You're missing a set of minutes. So, you know, now you make sure we put a sheet of papers.
No, no meeting.
And that's, that's gotta be in it.
Yeah.
Now, there's a bean for that account.
I guess I have, I guess.
That's what the law does, Greg, no offense, but I mean, I understand.
Lots, lots of court cases on that kind of thing.
I guess in their defense, I would, in the defense of auditors, I would say that it, it's just like our independent auditors. We are thrown in with companies that have a hundred thousand employees or whatever. We're thrown into the same guidelines with all them. And it's not quite fair to small organizations, but that's how, that's how auditors look at it. Because they've got superiors to report to also.
The first time that the Harris Allison Society that was audited, the auditor said, we want to see all of your permits and all your things you have related to your permit. They said, we have seventeen four drawer file cabinets. You said truck or what?
Yeah.
Said, we want to see a sample.
Can we put on the agenda the next meeting about getting the public meetings on these? This is what we discussed on these test wells? Can we get that on the next agenda?
Well. Yes, please explain that.
Several rule changes we need to get adopted. This one we just talked about. Plus, we have ones we need to adopt from legislation in the past, but those which takes effect on September first. So I get those proposed. I'd like to get this out and see the rules committee, the rules committee review. They don't have, so we have a phone meeting, I just want to give it out to the rules committee members, they can then let me know if they see any problems with it. Then we can get it to the board at the next, for the next board meeting, have them actually formally propose this as a rule. We'll get it public, we'll get it, get the.
And we vote on it there and then that's when we would set the public hearing.
Right.
To answer that, that, that's where it would actually occur at.
It's in process of going.
Yeah. There's some, there's some districts that the staff calls the public hearing. I'm not crazy about that because the board members are getting phone calls about rules they haven't seen yet. Right. So I prefer to have the staff, have the board approve the rules that are being proposed.
Okay, but it's, you're gonna get it in process where we can get this started.
Yeah, we, we put it on, we put it on the agenda for the next business meeting. And then we voted up or down. We voted up. We set the hearing at that meeting.
For the public hearing.
For the public hearing, so that we can come back and take the comment and, and vote on it.
Okay.
And get it done.
Need to get her in process.
Now, those rules, Greg, are those, uh, those are statutory? The ones you're talking about?
Both, both the changes I'm talking about, I'm admitting right now, yes, statutory, statutory required to bend it, you have to make, it's a statute change.
Okay.
Because of last session.
That, that doesn't, that's, it has to happen.
This is.
Anything on the, anything on the new session? Never mind, never mind.
Yes. Nothing's passed. The House isn't even meeting at this moment. Uh, but Chairman Harris filed four bills dealing with groundwater issues for this special session, and have not been added to the call. The first one repeals the rule of capture for all wells that produce more than twenty-five thousand gallons a day. Meaning if you're pumping and your neighbor's well goes dry, your neighbor can now sue you for damages, claiming you caused that with their well to go down. They still have to prove it. But now, now in the past, they didn't file the lawsuit because rule of capture says.
Yeah, it didn't matter.
They could prove it. They don't get any damage.
Right.
Uh, I don't think that's going anywhere. His own farmers have kind of risen up and revolt against him for having filed that bill. He did that because Houston, Anderson and Anderson counties are facing a fifty thousand plus acre foot export out of those three counties. Anderson and Henderson are in the, the, they just in Trinity Valley Groundwater Conservation District, along with Cherokee County. Houston County doesn't have a district. So the person who's wanting to do the projects, name is Kyle Bass, can drill as many wells as he wants to on his property and Houston County can pump as much water as he feels like. There's nothing that they can do about it. Unless they join another district or create a district, there's nothing they can do about it. So this bill to change the rule of capture was kind of started across the bow of, you know, pull your jets on this, I'm gonna make it so that everybody gets to sue you when you start pumping. Um, the other three, the other three have more to do with export permits. And, uh, they need some work. There's one that limits each permit to no more than five percent of the bag if they're gonna export. You know, Kyle Bass can set up twenty different LLCs and take a hundred percent of the match under that that provision. So that, I don't think that's gonna work with if they want to. There's another one that requires a two-thirds vote of all of the districts in the GMA to approve an export permit. And, uh, that's difficult because if a third, if, if one more than the third votes no, then the district doesn't issue the export permit, and I don't know who the applicant then sues. Do they sue the district? Do they sue the people that voted no? Is there some sort of process?
GMA.
Other districts?
Yeah.
And, and yeah, let's not make, let's not make the GMA a legal person. That's a brilliant.
But you kind of do, you kind of doing it if they're, everyone in the GMA is, I don't know.
Well, it requires a vote of each individual board, not the GMA itself, but it's all the districts within the GMA. So, yeah, it's, it's.
Where?
There's problem ahead.
Question, you know, and I'm gonna go to Charlie, but where are all of these projects occurring at? Is this all over in East Texas or?
Creasor, Wilcox.
All in the Creasor region.
If you look, there's a, a strip of aquifer for the runs from.
Yeah, Texas. Yeah.
And it's a very prolific aquifer. There's a lot of water there. There are, there are six export projects coming out of Gonzalez County. There are three. Yeah, three coming out of, uh, Bastoffa Lee Counties. The big one, Vista Rich Pipeline is coming out of Burtonson County and taking a pipeline all the way down I thirty-five to San Antonio.
But isn't that a sand aquifer that's supposed to recharge slowly?
No, it's a, it's, it's it's mostly sand and gravel, but, um, there, it, it depends on which part of the aquifer you're talking about, which level. Because, you know, there's Creasor, there's Wilcox, there's, uh.
Multiple layers.
City, there, you know, there's, yeah, all much different levels. And when, you know, you get down low and up, then it becomes so salty, you can't, you can't use it. And so then, you know, but the recharge zone runs just east of I thirty-five and the rest of the aquifer down, it's for there down toward the coast. And that's where all those, those acres of paperwork are coming from. Although Little Pecos has a twenty-five thousand roughly acre foot permit for Fort Stock and Holdings, the pipeline network, Midland, Odessa and San Angelo.
So.
Does it have come up with one up there going east instead of going, trying to go towards a pass?
Yeah.
I didn't know about that one.
Not there's any holding to this, but there's talk of a like an eight foot pipeline coming from over from the coast that they're gonna fix the salt water where we could drink it and be pumped this direction?
When, when Bitcoin hits a million dollars, they'll probably be able to pay for that.
Well, I mean, I, I just heard that that was, was an option.
There, there, seawater desal solves everybody's problem as soon as it's portable.
Well, I mean.
The problem, the, the problem in Texas is figuring out how to pump it uphill a thousand feet.
Right.
They can, if they can put all that in, they can pump it.
The, the, the energy needed to get the salt out of first and then to get it delivered to, uh,
Well, you need that.
My big, Amarillo.
But it, it was mentioned in the county commissioners meeting months back.
Well, that's I'm sure there are people who would love to do that. I think right now it's still high in the sky. And
I just wondered.
The bigger, the bigger problem, I think, is as long as cheap groundwater is available, nobody's gonna be looking to desal. But I think we're gonna do brackish groundwater desal long before we do seawater. And first off, it's only ten thousand, most of us will have ten thousand parts per million.
A lot easier to clean up.
And it's already here. Just gotta try to bring it to the surface and clean it up. And then you gotta get rid of the brine. That's more expensive.
Yeah.
We dumped that.
Where to put that at?
You reject it. It's like a little gas company, you're gonna be rejected.
That can't be good.
Anyway, that, yeah, that's those four bills are, are in the hopper. They have not been referred to committee. As soon as they're referred, I'm sure they'll have a committee hearing on them. Uh, if they don't get added to the call, I don't think they're gonna get referred. But there's that, they have a huge issue that really caught the attention of the Chair of the House Natural Resources Committee because it's his district. Uh, and I expect to see some interim studies and I expect to see some legislation next time.
Yeah, it's not gonna go away. That's coming back. For sure.
Yeah. And this, I don't know how much money this Mr. Bass has, but, uh, he wants to do forty-five test wells.
Cool.
So he's got some money.